Downtown Council cares about the future of our city and we represent Jacksonville's downtown business community, including major corporations, growing businesses, and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that downtown and greater Jacksonville will thrive and prosper, and we pride ourselves on keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top-tier speakers to our meetings. As I mentioned, we typically meet on the first and third Friday of every month in the morning. So typically, our meetings in-person have been at the old San James Church in downtown Jacksonville with breakfast provided by Bren Board and coffee by Martin Coffee. But due to the global pandemic, we have been conducting our meetings via Zoom since March and continue to reevaluate our in-person plans, you know, on a rolling basis. So this meeting is obviously no different. We're excited to have an incredible downtown leader with us here today. And so I'm going to kick it over to Laura, who's on the board of Downtown Council, to introduce our speaker.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Edchcombe. I'm the Director of Catering Events for the Bren Board, and I also sit on the board for Downtown Council. And I'm going to very quickly introduce our speakers this evening, mainly because there's a lot of information and we want to make sure that we utilize our time tonight. We're gonna do a quick intro, we're gonna let the speaker speak, and then we're gonna have a Q&amp;A session. So if you have any questions, just type them in the chat within Zoom and we will be kind of collecting them on the backside, and then I will spit them out to Jake and Kat whenever one more's into that part. And if we have time, we're gonna do some breakouts. So real quickly, let's get this started. I'm going to be introducing today Jake Gordon and Kat Hardwick. They are from Downtown Vision, which is a 90-block business improvement district in downtown Jacksonville. They've been around for about 20 years, I think that they started in 2000. And they're, they are the public-private partnership with the City of Jacksonville and with the DIA. Every year, they release a report that kind of gives us all the nitty-gritty, all the goods, bads, the greats, the wonderfuls, that have to do with downtown as a whole and our wonderful city. So tonight, we have Jake Gordon, who, like I said, is the CEO, and then Kat Hardwick, who's the Director of Marketing. This is their, her baby. So we're both on here tonight, and I'm gonna let them get started.
Thanks, Laura.
Welcome.
Thank you. I think Kat's our Vice President of Marketing at this.
Oh, I'm so sorry. She is.
I'm not promoting her on this Zoom, but she deserves it. And I'm very glad she can be here and get attention that she might not want. But Downtown Vision, we are, I'm only as good as the people who work for me, and Kat has done a fantastic job with this report. I think she would rather me mainly speak, so we'll see if she wants to talk. But she, we've referred to this report as her baby, and it's a beautiful report that I will share. So actually, and thanks to all of you for tuning in and caring about downtown. Downtown Council's amazing. I see so many familiar faces that I am so happy to see, and I really appreciate you guys all spending your Tuesday happy hour time with us. All right, let's see if this works. Zoom life. Yeah, I can't see everywhere. Oh, no, wait, hold on. Okay, let's see if I can do that. So, there we go. Now I got it. All right, hopefully you can all see my screen. Show of thumbs, that you guys, okay, good. So Downtown Jacksonville, this is a brief report. Oh, that didn't work at all. So really quickly, you mentioned Business Improvement District. Hopefully, maybe you haven't heard of this, but we're, the Business Improvement Districts, or BIDS, are in all sorts of cities all over the world and across North America. Canada has a ton of them. Basically, we're not the city, we're a nonprofit that's funded by an assessment of the private property owners. So similar to like a neighborhood association, but we have a, and so you could see Seattle, Knoxville, any big city you can think of has these bids. It's really a legal term where you have a district that all the property owners in that district pay into a nonprofit, and that nonprofit has a board of directors made of the property owners, and then they do stuff that's for the benefit of all those properties. So, uh, we, our district is not, the hallway, I've got like a rogue arrow in there, sorry about that. The, our district is just a half-square mile in the middle of downtown, and so it's not all of downtown. As Laura said, we put around 6,000. And so for us, this has been the core of downtown for a long time. The DIA was mentioned, Lori Boyer and Andre Wallace before her on that great agency, and that agency is the city, so we worked together on that. All the property owners in this orange area pay us 1.1 mils, so it's a dollar ten and every thousand dollars of value, and we have a budget of about 1.6 million, which we spend in this area. But really, downtown is defined as this bigger area, so our state of downtown is all of this area, not just our district. Confusing, I know. You can put your questions in the chat. I didn't want to mention the DIA. I think you had Lori Boyer, where I crashed her Zoom the other time, which she did an amazing job, and I got way too much attention, which is always what happens. I feel bad for Lori. But the people always ask me, well, we just need a plan for downtown. And it's like, we have a plan for downtown. I haven't been here all that long, but this plan was only finished in 2015. So Downtown Investment Authority's only been around for five or six or seven years now. And so they have a big plan, it's 375 pages, they have a brand-new website, which is very beautiful, you can go to it, and you can download this plan and you can read it, and it's, it's good. They've updated it in 2019, but it's actually going to be updated soon, and we've really come a long way in the last five years since this plan was adopted in 15. Kudos to Andre and to Lori for making such amazing progress. For us, again, I don't work at the city, but the mayor and city council and the board of directors of the DIA, and the DIA and the CEO, they do an amazing job for downtown, and we like to think of ourselves as, you know, the place where the public and the private meet in downtown. So my board of directors is mainly private stakeholders, but, you know, Lori and a city council person are on my board, but the majority of my board is private property owners, and usually, they don't know the first thing about city government. They're just like, I own a skyscraper, I want it to be better downtown, what's going on, why is it better? I think we have a number, a couple of board members on. I see Alan on here, he's a board member of DVI, thank you, Alan from Haskell, and maybe some others, sorry, there's so many. But, you know, our board is really there to interface with the DIA, and, and our board has rightly said that we should work directly with the City of Jacksonville. So in my mind, City of Jacksonville, the mayor's office, they own a huge amount of downtown. In fact, I mentioned, we have a 1.6 million dollar budget. The city does contribute what it would pay us on the formula. So just like if they were a private property owner, they pay that, and that's about $500,000. So a third of our budget in that area means the city owns about a third of that value. So it's pretty, it's definitely still, I think we want it to be in private hands, and the DIA's been doing a great job of privatizing it, but the city is still a big partner in downtown. Um, we have a bunch of pillars that we do, this is what we spend our money on. I don't have all of these slides, if you've seen our ambassadors, Experience Creation, Marketing and Events, but I'm here to talk about information management. So we mentioned the report, look at how beautiful it is. You can download it, Kat did an amazing job of this report, and you can download it at DTJax reports dot com. You're all on your computer right now, I'm like 95% positive you are, so you can download it. And, you know, it's a report that is really made to collect all of the data about downtown. We think of ourselves as the data collection arm, DIA, you know, with us knowing all the private property owners and knowing the city as well, we're able to collaborate on all that data. And the city doesn't collect as much data as you think, so we like to think we do a good job of that. And so all of this is available at our website, we have a brand-new website, amazing. Look at all these dots, it's unbelievable, you can sort this map, and you can go to our website and see everything about downtown Jacksonville. So this report, um, I do know we're in the middle of, middle, maybe not, of a global pandemic. Probably that's why we're on Zoom and not actually at a bar with each other. I am a positive person by nature, if you know me, so I like to be positive, but it has been a hard year for downtown, not to take anything away from that, so I'll start with all this, and then at the end, I have a COVID disclaimer, and no one really knows what the future will hold, but we're working really hard to make sure our downtown community survives this like we've survived Hurricane. So, um, if you were gonna take away one thing from our State of Downtown report, it's really this, the 6.5 billion in major projects, that includes everything that's completed this last year, so it's important to remember that this is not a year, it's actually 18 months, January of last year to June of this year, so a little bit of COVID, but mainly pre-COVID. And all of that is 530 million, if you, if that's completed in the last 18 months, and so that investment's up 150% from last year, 210 million. And if you were on, really, you know, if you were at the Downtown Council last year, I think I might have spoken again, I'm not sure, but 210 million was a great number. We were like, this is an amazing number, this number is so huge, and now it's over-doubled that number this year. So, you know, the DIA and the mayor, Mayor Curry has been a supporter of downtown since day one, city council. When I got my job, people were saying, you're gonna have to talk people into why did downtown matter? And I have not had to talk anyone into why downtown Jacksonville matters. In fact, the, the love for DTJax has just grown and it's been amazing. And you see, but the life of a city is a long one, you know, these projects take two years to even finish. So if you're gonna say, hey, let's start doing stuff, it takes a long time. You see, we have 3 billion and under construction right now, which, to put that number in perspective, you know, I think we've had 3 billion of investment over like the last 15 years or so. Kat's nodding, so I know that's kind of right. So that's her taking 2,000, when we started doing this first report, and adding up this construction number, what was actually constructed, all the way through. So that's real, like, since 2000, we've added about 3 billion as of 2018, and then right now, we have 2.9 billion under construction. Granted, money is more expensive these days, if that's the term for it, but it really is a hockey-stick-style curve, and I think people that have said, you know, you've always talked about downtown, when is it gonna change, you talked about it for a while, you know, these are the reasons why it will change, it won't be Jake Gordon talking, it'll be all these people investing their money and things are actually happening, which is fantastic. And again, we haven't done any of these projects, I don't want to take credit for any of them, it's that we're collaborating and trying to tell the story about downtown. And so, the story of downtown, we really want people to live there. A number of people are, uh, moving to downtown, we've got some great new places to live, and we have a new website that the Chamber itself has put out, LibDTJax.com, which is fantastic. We want to get to 10,000 residents, I know you've heard Daniel Davis, the head of the Chamber, say that, you've heard Lori Boyer say that, Mayor Curry, and, you know, when I got here in 2015, we were probably at like 4,000, maybe? And so now, up 18% from last year at 6,000. And so really, you know, this progress continues, we're gonna be at 10,000 in a couple of years, which is a really good number for downtown. The reality is, 94% occupancy, if, if people want to live in downtown, the developers have, you know, the development, like 220 Riverside is a great example, that came online about 2015, people are living there. People have, have all the things that have come online to live in downtown, people have rented. The Barnett, which is a beautiful storied building, is fully rented. So you look at that and you think, you know, if they, if we build it, people will rent it, which is more a story than how many residents we have, because it's really a story to developers, and that's what this report is for, build us more great places to live, and people will live in them in downtown. And then once we get a critical mass of residents, we're gonna see all the things that people really want, which is all the retail, all the convenience stores, all the things that we really want. So if you are interested in living downtown, we have a great website for you. I think I saw Adam on here from Wing Guard, recognized by the JBG rightly for helping build these great websites, so plug to them. They built our website, they built this website too, and this is a great resource if you want to find out where to live in downtown. Doesn't replace Realtors or anything like that, but just shows you all the opportunities that you have here in downtown and links up to our website really well. And look at this super cute logo. Tons of places being built. Again, really, the five-year window into State of Downtown is that in 2015, when I came here, we were in a period of disinvestment. You know, the economy had crashed in 2007, things were not happening, people were not building, you know, the big buildings we have in downtown were all built a long time ago, but right now, five years later, we have a lot of new buildings that people have built, which is a huge, has gone, I moved it from here, I moved to here from New Jersey and thought, you know, downtown Jacksonville's on the rise, Jacksonville's a city on the rise, and it's really totally exceeded my expectations related to these numbers. These are really good numbers in terms of how much we're adding, how many new units we're adding. And if you go back to the DIA plan, you can see, they wanted to add a certain amount of units, and it's so low that I think we've already added it in the first five years when they thought it would take 10 back in 15. So, um, and I think we're recording this, we can quote me on that, but we'll have to look at the report together. So, uh, a bunch of great stuff, a bunch of cranes that we haven't had in a while, happy to talk about that, you know, all the details are what people will pay, and so you see this stuff over here. So this is all preview of the report, please download the report. 83.5% like or love living downtown, as many of you are in downtown, downtown Jacksonville is not perfect, far from it, and so, you know, people like the city living, they like the walkability. The worst things, though, are things that you would expect. Loitering transient population, always number one when we talk to people in downtown, and we have been working on that. I know I'm on the mayor's downtown task force for homelessness, which he created, which is fantastic. Urban rest stop, we've been doing a lot, it's getting a lot better, but that problem is still, needs a lot of attention. Empty storefronts, again, adding residents will do stuff to that, you know, we really want to make sure businesses are succeeding downtown. COVID, definitely not helping, so, but we have made a lot of progress on that, but still a lot to go. And lack of a walkable grocery store, definitely something that we hear a lot, and so those are things that, you know, next time we have a survey out, hopefully you'll take it and tell us your thoughts about downtown, or just email me, my email's at the end. Office market is still strong, people are worried about COVID and what that impact will have. The reality is, a lot of this data was pre-COVID, but, you know, we even see this not changing in the last quarter. Downtown Jacksonville, I think 15 of the 16 tallest buildings in Jacksonville are in downtown. So Jake Gordon is not telling you to care about downtown, I know you guys are the Downtown Council, so you're already with me, but the reality is, we put all this stuff here, it's not, there's not skyscrapers all over town, they're only in one place. So if we want that place to be good, it'll help everyone, and I don't think that's that hard to sell, but, you know, it takes a little while. I do think that if you look at the vacancy rate, our vacancy rates are fantastic. So, you know, back in 2011, which was still fresh in people's minds when I got here in 15, and even the spike in 14, you can see, you know, 25% vacancy in offices, like catastrophic, I mean, it's really rough when a quarter of all your offices are empty. And so now, 14% is really good, you can see, related to the suburbs are doing well, and that's trending down. Any healthy downtown has a vacancy rate of about 10% of office, because there's always gonna be some turnover, it's not like people move in right away, and so, any snapshot in time, and so I was really excited in '16 when we dropped below the suburbs, because usually the suburbs historically have crushed us in terms of how many people are out there in Jacksonville, which is, this is just how much room is available. Now, the suburbs helped us, they built a little bit, so that is a little empty, some of it apparently at this point, but we're so much lower in terms of downtown competing against the suburbs, and you can see, it's down in Q1 of 2020, which is fantastic, and it just keeps going lower. So that's a really good indicator for how healthy downtown is doing, the vacancy rate of office space in downtown. Average lease rates, another really good indicator for downtown to be successful, you want this to be honestly as high as possible. People are gonna complain, but like, if you look at the downtowns like we want to be, Atlanta, Charlotte, Nashville, Chicago, other cities, Oklahoma City, I mean, we want to compete in terms of an average lease rate, we want people to have such an experience, they're gonna pay a premium to be in a downtown environment, and that's where historically that hasn't happened. Always we've been ahead of it, but we want to widen this gap, because the suburbs, you know, again, you have to pay a premium a little bit, which was really good for all of our skyscrapers, so you see that, and those are holding steady. Um, you know, the projects have not changed, have not really gone away, everything that's being built is still being built with COVID, and that's fantastic. FIS, a billion-dollar company that makes its headquarters in Jacksonville, could have gone anywhere. I mean, I know that there was talk about their expansion in 2015 when I came here on the streets, the streets always talk, and so five years later, they doubled down, they could have literally moved anywhere, honestly. This is a huge deal, the fact that they are building $150 million headquarters in Jacksonville. They're really, you know, and this is where Andre now at Jax USA, they do a fantastic job of recruiting, and I know he worked hard on this, and Gary Norcross, who is the CEO of FIS, is just so fantastic, and you see Florida Blue and some other entities around there, we all really pulled together from a Chamber perspective to really make sure that if things need to change, so there can be parking garages built, and these guys can build this, that everyone's working together, which is really what you've got to do as a city. JEA and all the trials and tribulations that they've done are still building their new headquarters on Adams Street, my office is right here behind it, in the Ed Ball Building, and so this is actually being built right now, it's a public-private partnership with Ryan Companies, and it's gonna be a fantastic building. And then the only challenge is, what are we gonna do with their old building, because we still have their old, old building that is being redeveloped right now, but those are good problems to have, and this building's gonna be amazing. 462,000 square feet of office, amazing. Retail, people love retail, it's what everyone sees, the reality is, we've been adding a lot of retail on the street, and, you know, there's a lot of work to do in that regard, but there really has been a lot added, and hopefully you're supporting the retail in this time, they really need your support. If you think something's gonna stick around, it might not, so go grab a coffee at Ground Level Coffee, which is in the Bank of America building, she's super nice, and her coffee's amazing, it's bold bean coffee right there in downtown. Just to mention one, obviously, I love all of those businesses. I did want to give DIA a shout-out. Food and Beverage, Retail and Enhancement, I think you heard Fab Rep at the last meeting. Bren Board, $374,000 to build a flagship location in the ViStar Tower. ViStar, fantastic partner for downtown. Ryan Wolberg and his crew doing, you know, it's really nice to see owner-occupied building, where you really see the investment, they're putting so much money into that building, and it's totally self-interested, they want to recruit talent to work at their credit union, and they want it to be a beautiful building for their customers, and, you know, they want to bring in Bren Board, they looked around and they're like, these are the best guys we want to bring in, and we might have talked to them very early on, and now it's great that it's coming to fruition, and this is money the city is spending out of its own pocket to leverage the money of the private investment. $3 million is earmarked for this, it's in a certain area, you know, the city is really doing a lot to the DIA to make these, you know, it can't be the city alone, it has to be private investment, but they're doing a lot. I mentioned this because Nat Ford and JTA have been doing a lot also, I lost their logo somehow, but this is in the report, and there's so much more information. Groundwork Jacksonville and the Emerald Trail, this report is getting so crowded. Public transit, walking, biking, that is the future of downtown, we have so many plans in the works, including repairing the River Walk and doing some animation, so much going on with this, so check it out on the report. JRTC is a $25 million, you know, that opened during COVID, but has been years in the making, it's the hub of all public transit for all of northeast Florida, right in our downtown in the Lavilla neighborhood, fantastic facility, go there if you haven't gone there, and JTA's done a great job, obviously, tons of plans with autonomous vehicles. Uh, went the wrong way, figuring it out. Another quick thing, since I know you guys are all influential, call your city council people, I know that the Historic Preservation, Jacksonville Historical Society has already come out for this, there's a bill coming through city council right now that is for downtown preservation revitalization, it is through the DIA, so through, they submitted it, and basically, it's a revamp of the existing Historic Preservation Revitalization Trust Fund. So in my mind, a lot of people get upset, everyone wants historic buildings to be preserved in downtown, everywhere, we want them everywhere, but there needs to be money for that. You know, the Chop House is a fantastic signal of that, so is the Barnett, but money from the city went into those buildings. The reality is, the trust fund is empty, council president or finance committee chair, Matt Carlucci, Councilman Carlucci, wanted to refund it, might have seen in the newspaper, there was all this anxiety about it, and the reality was, Lori and the DIA stepped up and said, look, it doesn't make sense, this program is 18 years old, we're gonna revamp the whole program, and it's gonna come back better than ever, and the main thing is that that old program capped investment at a million dollars. Well, the trio is a $100 million project, what does it make sense to have a million dollars? And what happens is, they don't even use this trust, they just go around it, and everything's a waiver at city council. And so if, if we really want to help these developers, and there's so much that's coming online, we really have to pass this investment. You don't have to worry about taxpayer dollars being spent wisely, this is just, this bill is just the framework, and every one of these bills is still gonna come to council, so if people are interested. But to me, the only way we're gonna get the development done that we want done is have the city invest, and it wants to invest, I think the, haven't talked to the mayor directly on this, but I feel like the administration is very supportive of this, and we'll see how it goes, but you never know with council these days, but we really are very supportive of this from a Downtown Vision perspective, and really hope people, and it's very complicated because it's related to the underwriting of Historic Preservation, but the reality is, like, in the state of Florida, we don't have a historic tax credit. So I talk to developers every day, they go, I want to restore your old buildings, but I'm gonna do it in St. Louis instead, because the state is giving me money. And here, really, the city, because of the way Florida's set up, has to do it all, and so, you know, we want to spend money on it, and I think this is a great program, so please support it. Shameless plug. All right, COVID. So we have a little COVID disclaimer in our State of Downtown report, and Kat's been doing a great job with our new tracking of, of tracking foot traffic in downtown. Again, we want to be the, the data collection for downtown, you can see this big spike, that's the fireworks, so almost 150,000 people in downtown. I don't remember what the second spike is, maybe Kat will finally chime in, but the reality is-
It's Monster Jam.
It's Monster Jam!
Monster Jam.
Of course!
And World of Nations.
Everyone loves Monster Jam!
Yep.
Look at all these people, and honestly, you know, this is where downtown fluctuates wildly, Jaguar Games, you know, Jazz Fest, like, but we average about 57,000 people on the street, which is actually pretty good. Again, we had 6,000 residents, right? It's not a lot, we have 57,000 office workers, this does not track those specifically, this is just tracking the street-level activity. And so that's a pretty good number when we started to look at it, but then you see, of course, COVID has really hurt it. So this is matching, we're down about 40%, we're down to about, we're down 60% to about 40%. So this is tracking with what Aikles Deli will tell you, for every 10 customers I used to have, I have four now. So that really shows that if you like a place in downtown, you really should go. I love a bar called The Volstead, which hopefully many of you have been to, it's not that easy to find, but I've been going in there and buying bottles of alcohol, because they can't even sell drinks right now because they're closed, and so my, my home bar is stocked, but I really don't want them to go away, and I'm doing that at a number of places that I like and don't want to go away. So, you know, this is really, you can see it's inching up in July, back to about half of the traffic, but really, you know, if you had told me in February that downtown walking traffic is gonna drop 60%, I would not have believed. I mean, that would have, it's really hard to fathom what we're going to, and that's really where, you know, our downtown's actually more insulated than some around the country. They, you know, Seattle's downtown, everything's closing, because everyone is used to all the foot traffic, where Amazon's working from home, no one's around, so actually, our, our businesses are holding on a little bit better than some other downtowns, but the longer this goes on, the harder it will be. Hotels, if you're ever gonna do a staycation in downtown, now is the time. I think you saw, maybe you saw that the Omni's for sale. I do, it doesn't bother me, the Omni's not going away, if someone buys the Omni, they're probably still gonna make it a hotel, it probably will just change the flag, so people are like, it's going away, doom is for downtown. Probably still gonna be here, I hope, but it might not be an Omni. Omni, obviously, as Amelia Island, they usually have resorts, so having a downtown, you can see all the ones there, and so that's where they have been awakened to this, and so Hyatt is our normal convention center in downtown, we've got a lot of great hotels in downtown, but the downtown hotels were hit the hearts. 60% change in occupancy, our hotels were literally closed, hasn't happened in anyone's memory where the hotels were forced to close. And so that's where, you know, obviously, public safety is the number one, I think the mayor did a great job in terms of making sure people were safe in that regard, but, you know, really hard on our businesses when businesses are forced to close. So if you want to go to the Hyatt, now's the time, get married there, it's a great place, beautiful deck, overlooks the water, Lexington, a lot of other greats. So cultural institutions, again, downtown has all the buildings, and it has the majority of the cultural institutions. Mocha, Mosh, Florida Theater, Times Union Center, the Symphony, the list goes on. Jacksonville does not have a lot of major cultural venues that are not in the three-square miles of downtown, and that's saying a lot, because Jacksonville's 860-plus square miles. And so when you look at it, like it or not, someone put all those venues in downtown, so we should probably support them and do what we can. Right now, one of the toughest times that they can remember, Mocha just reopened, I highly, if you like Mocha as an amenity, which I do, please go there, they've highly invested in their virtual tours, so this is one of the benefits of COVID, is that they spend a bunch of money and having, it doesn't have to be a tour guide, they're still doing live tour guides, but now you can get a virtual tour of the museum, and obviously, you have to wear a mask, as all of us know. Mosh has been open since June, but they are going through real dire straits, you know, the, the gate receipts is what keeps them going, and, you know, it's just been, no one's coming, and so you just see all of these changes, the business model of these venues are not set up to wait months for the foot traffic to come back, it's just, it's, it's heartbreaking to me, and hopefully, we can all try to help as much as we can. The city has done a fantastic job, the Florida Theater, they've canceled 100 shows, so if So if you think they make about $12,000 first per show, let's just say that's 1.2 million that they're losing, you know, they're, they're not used to that. They have 119 people that work every show, all those people are out of work. And the people that are still working there are trying to do things. They've cobbled together about 1.2 million out of the PPP and other, you know, the ViStar loan that was really great that the mayor collaborated with, with ViStar. But the reality is that's only going to last them to this fall. And so right away, if shows can't go on, the Florida Theater is an amazing historic cultural icon in downtown Jacksonville. Shame on you if you haven't been there. Kat Hardwick on the board. And they, but they can't socially distance. They're 2,000 seat historic theater, 500 people, it just doesn't work. They just can't do that. So they just can't have shows and it's heartbreaking. Uh, and so if you can support them right now, you can pay for a seat. They use this opportunity, never usually have this long between shows, so they're changing all the seats, which they've wanted to do forever. So hopefully that's a little bit of a silver lining, um, but that's really rough. So uh, hopefully I'm not talking too much, but uh, you know, we've tried to do a little something. This is a shameless plug for something Kat and I and our team have been working on. You know, we would love if you supported these businesses directly. Again, if you want, just pick your favorite, you don't have to do them all. It's not crazy like that. Pick your favorite, try to spend money, buy a gift card, give them your money and help them in this time of need because any business they are hurting. But if you are um, don't have a great focus like me, as maybe you can tell, you like to move your money around. We have a, a digital e-gift card where you can spend it at 27, 26 businesses and counting, I think it's 27 by now. And uh, you can purchase it at DT Jackson gift card.com. It's only on your phone. You take it, it's basically a MasterCard, a picture of a MasterCard on your phone and we will literally give you money. Not totally smart enough to figure out how much money you'll get, but you see it at the bottom here. If you spend 25 bucks, we'll give you five bucks. So we're literally paying you to spend your money. So if you guys as the downtown council ever buy coffee or ever spend any money in downtown, I would buy $200 because we are literally giving you $50. And then we hope you go out right away and spend your money at Wolf and Cub or Chamblins or all these places that are still open that really need your business in downtown. And with that, that is my uh, recap. Hopefully there's a lot of questions and I've been talking nonstop for like 30 minutes in a row, I think, so I might pass out, but I'm happy to talk about all the other questions that you guys have. Thank you.
Okay. Now, before we go any further, Kat, is there anything that Jake didn't fill in or anything from your baby that you'd like to add to that at all?
No, I mean, it's just a, it's a collaboration with so many people. And we're so lucky to have amazing partners who care as much about downtown. Everybody here tonight, the Chamber, the DIA. So um, it is a, a passion project of mine and um, I personally love to work behind the scenes. I'm an introvert by nature, so work really well with Jake in that respect. So thank you, Jake. Selling it all around town.
I am also an introvert. No.
No.
Pathologically extroverted to a thought. Uh, okay. Are there people-
Okay.
Should I go through the-
There are.
How's this work?
So many questions. So I'm gonna, here's the thing.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So for those of you that have done this with us before, I usually try to like group them together and ask good questions that are like all relevant. Too many questions. So I'm just going to start and Jake, we're just going to get through as many as we can and then if we got to get more answered later, we will. Okay, so here we go. Um, so someone said, and it's funny because I will, I'll second this because I also remember this. I remember when you moved here, what surprised you about Jax? What has surprised you about Jax since moving here and taking this job? Like, oh, since you've been here in the last, so what year are we in? You came here in 2015?
Yeah.
So since then, what, like what surprised you about Jax? Good, bad, both?
These are good questions. Okay. First of all, I'm not sharing my screen anymore, right? I think Amanda helped me over there. Okay, great. Now I can see everyone. Great to see everyone. I know so many of you, uh, it's flattering you logged in. I'm just glad that you're supporting downtown and everything everyone's doing. Again, not about downtown vision per se, but about downtown. Me personally, again, I um, I definitely didn't think Jacksonville was so small. I mean, honestly, there's supposed to be a million people here, but I think I know almost everyone on this Zoom maybe, which is also, I, I, I literally, if I, at some point, I'm going to forget people's names because I'm just overloading because there's so many great people. But you know, it is, really is the biggest small town. It's unbelievable how like everyone knows everyone. I can't go to Publix or a grocery store, Fresh Market without seeing people. Like I have to dress up nice or something. Go to the airport, I always see someone I know, which honestly is kind of phenomenal. I came from Camden, New Jersey, it was nine square miles. There was only like, I used to never see anyone. So I really think we should embrace that. I remember former council president Greg Anderson talked about that at his uh, inauguration when he became council president. I always think about that because it really is our calling card because it's just such a warm community. I mean, I love talking to people, so it's fantastic to talk to everyone. And uh, you know, I really do think that that's really interesting. I think that's, and it's not like, it's obviously good, but it's also, you know, everyone knowing everyone else is also kind of weird. The gossip spreads faster, everything changes, like stories, like it's, it's, I do feel like there's a little bit more disinformation as than, you know, there's stuff that happens and all of a sudden it spreads around and everyone thinks one thing. And I'm like, that doesn't seem right at all about downtown. So uh, you know, but it's uh, I mean, we love it. My wife is uh, from Gainesville originally. We moved here. Um, so welcoming. I mean, I really had so many people support us and support downtown and it's really been, I mean, and I think there's going to be a huge influx of people from the Northeast. I mean, everyone's moving out of New York and New Jersey. Why would you want to live there anymore? I'm from New Jersey originally. I moved here. I went back for the first time relatively recently and I do not miss it at all. There's nothing better. I mean, honestly, especially if you're like me and have young kids and you're raising a family, there's no reason to live on a La- Long Island or in suburban New Jersey. It's just as good here. It's just slightly hotter in the summer and it's cheaper and everyone's a little nicer. So I do hope that that's what we can sell to everyone and recruit a lot of investment, which this is the silver lining of COVID is that, you know, people are looking around and Jacksonville becomes really attractive in that regard. And hopefully we can parlay uh, a lot of that into more people down here, which I do think more people would not hurt this area. I think it would still be as welcoming and we'd still all know each other if we had 2 million people.
I think we would also. It's, it's interesting that you say that. I mean, a lot of people that are part of downtown council and that are joining this call that aren't normally part of downtown council. We all have been, we've all been working very hard for downtown in our own collective ways for a very long time. I mean, it's, it's, it's very nice. And like I said earlier, before we started, when you came and filled Terry's role, we were all kind of like, oh God, who is this guy? And I'll tell you, it's, it's, it's a pleasure to have you fighting, a good fight for downtown. Yes, you're Superman floral shirt.
Yeah, it's great. I, I mean, and again, I don't want to take credit for anyone, everyone else is doing. I mean, it's a really community aspect. And the one thing I don't have in here, which I should probably mention is that this was just a sampling and I don't want to waste all your time, but obviously all the developments. So maybe there'll be questions on those, but there's-
There are.
Too many to count. I mean, and so happy to talk about them, but if we don't talk about all of them, which I used to always get, the first question would be about the landing and now it's a huge grassy field for better-
Not on here.
No, no one asks about that anymore. Everyone's moved on. But uh, you know, the idea would be that uh, with so much investment, $500 million, like there's so many projects happening right now. So if I don't mention a project, doesn't mean it's not important. It means you should get the report and, and you're happy to email me or tweet me and I will answer all your questions from what I know.
Okay. So here's one that I thought was interesting. So can you talk about the decision to no longer allow surface parking for new owners? Is this really realistic in promoting people to invest in downtown?
So that's a great question, first of all, and I don't know who asked it, but uh, you know, one of the challenges we have in downtown, historic preservation is one. We want new investment, but we want to save our own, our, our old stuff and it's historic. And you get in this like little place where you're trying to balance these two benefits. Parking is another one. Ideally, we would have known parking in downtown. If you go to the best city you can think of, their parking is horrendous. I mean, I don't know, whatever you want to say, whatever you want us to be like. I mean, uh, Hoboken, New Jersey's not better, but Jersey City has one parking space for every 17 people that, that live there. Everyone parks way out and they take transit in and then they, then they take something under to get to Manhattan. So it's not like we want more parking. I mean, in terms of a long-term vision, the reality is development won't happen without parking and that's why you see we're still adding parking garages. But I don't think anyone, even the developer, wants to add those. If everyone would ride their electric scooter just to work, we would love that. And then we would just build more trails. So in my mind, you know, parking is important. People get very fired up about it. I mean, I do think, um, I remember going to citizens insurance and talking to them before they moved there in the TIA bank tower. And you know, one of the big changes when you move your office downtown is that you can't park right where you walk in. I park two blocks away. It's definitely a different kind of state of mind. You never really want to leave and you don't really want to go to your car. So if you want that, it's a little bit like living in a high-rise and instead of living in a house, no one disparages that, but a lot of people do. So in my mind, I do think, you know, parking is something that we are really focused on in terms of development. And um, you know, I know the DIA has done a parking study and is going to continue to do more. So we are just trying to balance those competing things. I think if you look at um, Regency Centers as a fantastic shopping center in Brooklyn and on one hand, there's way too much parking in it, in that there's a giant parking lot and we want downtown to be dense and we want it to be walkable and dense. And on the other hand, if you ever go there, you can never find a space. So if you're, if you want to go to Burrito Gallery or go to all the things over there, you're like, I can't find a space. But the reality is we've got to reset our expectation. One of the real benefits will be if we can create infrastructure to get like Kat and myself or Ed Ball over to Brooklyn Station easily. And that's going to be a revamp of some of our infrastructure. And I think, you know, if Alan and Asko walk across the street, but the reality is the street needs a lot of improvements on a road diet perspective. So we're still in the middle ground of that. But uh, it is one of those catch 22 issues, parking, which is kind of hard to solve. So hopefully um, people will bear with us as we uh, densify downtown, but also make parking easier.
Is part of that, I know the DIA parking study and, and there's been rumor of a parking app. The beaches have a parking app. Like are we going away from meters? Are we, is like, is there a plan for downtown to make it easier to find available parking when it's available? Like what's, there's been rumors about that forever and ever and ever. Do we have any-
Question or a question someone asked? Okay.
It's a question. It's a question. Actually, I was, it was on my brain and then my good girlfriend Lauren said, speaking of parking, parking app.
This is a great question. So I'll tell you that pre-COVID, the DIA had a plan to make all of our meters much more expensive. And I a hundred percent support this and I'll tell you why. It might be counterintuitive, but here's why. Right now, all of our retailers want spaces open in front of them, right? The spaces are all taken. The reason they're all taken is parking is 50 cents. It's unbelievable. What is 50 cents? Gum costs like $2 now. I tried to buy a pack of gum the other day. Like nothing is 50 cents. When we did a study of 50 cents an hour, we were like, I couldn't find a city in California that is 50 cents. It's unbelievable how cheap it is. And it's really this part where Jacksonville, and I love it, I feel like I'm from here, but I'm not from, from here. And I know people will be upset when we raise parking meters, but you know, we're not going to do what Chicago did, which is sell our parking meters to private equity, but parking in Chicago is like 12 bucks an hour at the meter, but there's always spaces. The market will tell us whether or not people want to park there. The reason Ed Ball has parking all around it, people want to go pull their permits at Ed Ball and all the construction guys go there. Well, they pay 50 cents. Would they pay $3? Maybe. And so what would happen is all those spaces would be open. You make it more expensive and then the meters, the meters are not for people coming to downtown all day. That's not what they're for. And so right now, the meters are cheaper than the garages. Ed Ball has a garage, but no one would park in there because it's actually more expensive than the meter. So it doesn't really make sense. So we definitely need to change that. And you will see that, I think um, the politics are such that um, you know, we don't want to raise prices on anyone right now. And I get it, right? A lot of people are unemployed. This is a difficult time. And so that's where they've, they've not pushed this through, which makes all the sense in the world. But I'll be the first one to tell you and we can show you why. You don't think you want more expensive meters, but you actually do. If the meters were pricey, you're going to pull up to Chamblins and you'd be like, look at this, the spot's open right in front. Now, will you want to pay $3 to go in and run in and get a book? Some people might. I know Jacob's Jewelers across the street wants that too. And so that's where we need to do a better job of that. Right now, 50 cents an hour. Our enforcement is good, but it could always be better. And I know DIA is working on an app and working on kiosks. So there's a lot of things in the hopper on that. Things don't change right away, but kudos to Lori. And I know, you know, uh, under Andre Wallace, you know, the Office of Public Parking was moved under downtown. Historically, DIA didn't control parking, but most of the metered parking, I think it's like 99% of it is in downtown. So we're, we're making smart decisions, but it just takes a little bit longer than people would want.
I, I won't lie, I used to be the person that was like, I'm going to park here and then just take the $15 ticket because it was only a $15 ticket. My car could sit there all day if it was something really important. I'm totally guilty of that. So sorry. Anyway, okay. So let's go into some development projects because today it was announced Daleys is coming into downtown or coming to the Old Cartouche area. And that was rumored and then clearly it's coming into downtown. You know, do you think with Daleys coming into downtown, that that's going to help expand Lavilla and all of that? And then to that also with the, you know, JWV has been snapping up a bunch of historic properties lately. Also, do you have any idea what's going on with that? So two big last minute announcements. Do you know what's going on?
It's not just JWV. I think Daily Record got that a little bit. Alex Defakis, who's on our board, JWV, he got quoted that there's five contiguous blocks, but it's not all him. It's uh, Jim and Ellen Weiss. It's uh, I think Corner Lot Development and Elias at Petra. And so, but that whole corner up by uh, Old Seminole where uh, Sweet Pizza is, is, is going to be amazing. And I know JWV just bought and they are, all those properties are committed to retaining the historic character of their property. We always want that. I honestly have never talked to anyone that wants to knock a bunch of historic stuff down. And really in our downtown, if you look in Lavilla, we have saved a bunch of stuff. Now, did we knock a lot of stuff down uh, back in the day under Mayor Austin? Yes. So there is a lot of open lots there and it is a challenge. I am of two minds. I, I, you've probably seen me get quoted in the Daily Record tomorrow. Karen Mathis called me and it's like Daleys, like I like Daleys. Daleys is a local company. Uh, I love that they're investing in downtown. I do think people go there and we like to see our downtown business succeed. I, I did talk to Daleys early on when they were interested, which is always exciting I did talk to Daleys early on when they were interested, which is always exciting for me to talk to people excited about downtown. I do think LaVilla's growing and I think LaVilla, much like Brooklyn, has a great kind of nice convenience store that also has a gas station, which is an amenity downtown could use. There's kind of the outdated model of a convenience store, which is a little bit like we have up on State and Union in downtown. And so I'm kind of excited for a new model, which is way nicer and kind of more an amenity. That said, it was really sad to see the old Cartouche nightclub go. Again, you know, we would always rather it be saved. You know, some questions on if it could be saved. I haven't seen a Daleys with a nightclub old in it, but I, you know, one of the challenges is that these jack-o'-lantern teeth are like, when you get to that area, because LaVilla is, it's already been kind of cleared out and so there's opportunity for development. So that is one of the most difficult choices for us right now. You look at any of these projects, and I'm not making these decisions, but, and no one really made a decision, right? It's more about, you know, the private sector doing its thing. But like even if you look at the future, you know, what's going on at Fordham Bay or the shipyard, it's almost like whatever we get now, you know, is it valuable or later we regret it? And that's a good lesson for the landing. The landing was phenomenal in 1988, but then right away, it kind of downtown outgrew the value that it provided. So when I got here in 15, everyone would complain about the landing to me all the time. Why isn't it nicer? And then you're kind of at the mercy of a private developer that's keeping it nice. So, you know, that is a challenge. It's a little bit like, but do you literally turn people away? Do you prevent them from doing it? I do think we have a very good historic preservation process that does save a lot of the beautiful historic buildings that we have. And so, but so that is a little bit bittersweet in that regard. But again, I think Daleys would be good. That's a good location for it, right near the JRTC. You're going to get off the new automated and you walk over to Daleys and maybe at some point they'll stop selling gas because no one will need a car anymore and we'll all just be walking around downtown.
It would be nice that if that happened to that, I mean, maybe you can talk just a bit, I know that we've talked before, but the Emerald Trail in general, what it means for just, like just within like y'all's little bubble. I mean, we know, we've talked at great lengths, we've had Kay out from Groundwork Jacks to talk about it, but for you right now, where we stand today, what is it meaning for downtown? I mean, is the idea, everyone is walking everywhere, everyone is able to park their car and come in, you know what I mean? Like kind of to help with the whole, I know you love this project and talk to it.
Don't we need that? I mean, the Riverwalk, we were so excited and we have a beautiful Riverwalk, but isn't that just a good start? And we're really, when you look at what other cities are doing, if we want people to be coming downtown, you know, what do we have for them to offer? I mean, running the bridges is great. We have, we have a little loop. I mean, Lori and her council, I mean, FDOT is putting, you know, more of a trail. I mean, you know, we have a lot of infrastructure that we already have, which is fantastic. But don't we want that? I mean, everyone wants that and kudos to Kay for really making strong progress on that. But in my mind, you know, she deserves a lot of the credit, but also so many people have stepped up in the community. Brian Wolfberg right away, new to town and just like, we need this and I really want this. And then the Millers at Brightway Insurance, David Miller. And I do think, you know, those two champions, I mean, that's what our city needs. I mean, when we look at Nashville, if you guys have been to Nashville lately, cities drag themselves up themselves. If they're like, and I do think Jacksonville, going back to when you asked me, there's a little bit of like a, oh, we'll never get that or it'll never work or like, and when you go to Nashville, people will talk like that always. They go, no, we like it here, we want to be here. Pittsburgh, when you go there, people are like, don't talk bad about my city, I will hurt you. Detroit, they say that same thing. In Jacksonville, people are like, oh, it's not great. You're like, yeah, you might be right. It's like, wait, no, wait. And it's funny how the transplants are saying more like that. Like Wolfberg is from Buffalo, we went with the Chamber to Buffalo. And you know, he's like, look, like you, we can be like this, like we want to stay here forever. And, you know, I do think that there are champions in our midst and anyone can be that. And so support the Emerald Trail, Downtown Vision has supported it financially, if only. And I know that they have a matching grant from the Weavers. There's a lot of momentum right now. We absolutely, we absolutely want that and need that and it's going to be fantastic. And I love active transportation. I could talk about it forever. And a lot of work to do, but you know, that's really what would help everyone and public transit is the future, as I said, and I loop all the trails and, you know, anything non-motorized in terms of automobiles is kind of the future in my opinion.
To that, like, do you think that, and this speaks to like a greater, a bigger thing that I don't know that we've ever, how important do you believe, being in the intricate parts of things, how important do you think it is that there was continuity with Andre moving from DIA to the Chamber and then Lori coming over to DIA, like having the experience, having people in positions now that have had multiple experience and multiple civic organizations to really be moving us and driving us forward? Do you think, like, that's the only, like, do you know what I mean? Like, how do you?
Sure.
How do you see us going forward?
Andre's phenomenal. We didn't lose him. Took over for Jerry Milata, Jack's USA Partnership, phenomenal. Hopefully he's working right now because we need more businesses.
Probably.
Jacksonville. He probably, Lori's probably working right now. Lori Boyer's working right now too for the DIA. So those are two fantastic individuals that are doing a lot. I will say, do have to give a shout out to Mayor Curry because he, from day one has supported downtown. You know, a lot of, you know, there's, I mean, right now in our, in our community and in our nation, there are, it does feel like there are lines being drawn. I do feel like for me, downtown's for everyone. I'd like to bring everyone together. It is a nonpartisan place and in my mind is about unity and progress together. And it does really hurt when we kind of bicker over all sorts of things. Now, a lot of things are important, so it's been an amazing year in that regard with a lot of things happening and we're going to have, and, you know, but it's really about us all as a community. So I think people get a little, all downtowns are built by the private sector. So you mentioned people investing, but that's, you know, the city can do a little bit, but like to give the mayor of Pittsburgh credit for Pittsburgh being great is not true. We had the mayor of Pittsburgh at a ULI event and he came and talked to us and he's like, the people and businesses of Pittsburgh, that's why you see the Chamber be so important, because it really is a partnership with, you know, if the mayor were to wave a wand tomorrow and add a bunch of skyscrapers, he couldn't. The skyscrapers are built by private business. So it's about ViStar Credit Union buying a skyscraper and putting all its people in it. But the mayor is obviously a leader for our community and we have a lot of leaders of our community. And it's like if my wife and I fight in front of our kids, not the best leadership. So it is good if we're all working together. That's usually my standpoint. And I'm not, I mean, I am a little excited for December when this election hysteria is over, no offense, because I do feel like together as a nation and as a community, we can move forward and try to make progress. Again, downtown's nonpartisan. So I think, you know, having that experience that you mentioned is great, but I think that everyone can do something. You know, it is a little bit of a challenge, but you can tell your friends to come downtown. You could not even come downtown. You could just not talk bad about downtown. People used to talk a lot more bad about downtown. I went to Ponte Vedra Rotary and I was like, how many people have been to downtown? And like only half the people raised their hands. So it was like, okay, well, you know, you can't underestimate the suburbs. There's a little downtown bubble and the people of our community that are just, and we don't need to change their minds, but we don't need to get sucked into their negativity. Because if we build something cool, if the Jaguars are good and there's a good experience, people come downtown. They don't talk smack then. If Sweet Pizza's a great place to go get candy, everyone finds that place. It's not about coming downtown, it's about finding all this stuff that we like. If the symphony's great, people will come. I assume that's why Ponte Vedra people come and other things, Florida Theater. But, you know, the, nothing against Ponte Vedra, I love it there. And so, you know, there's, you know, we can just all be in this together and I, you know, I appreciate all you guys being on and spreading the word of downtown. And I've been accused of being a cheerleader, which is fine, but.
That's a good, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I could use everyone else helping out because there is no reason to complain about the city that's ours and the downtown.
It sounds like we need to reignite the downtown is on fire campaign that we were launching for a couple of years. I see Kat's laughing. I will recall sitting in many a meetings during that one, so I will do that.
Is downtown on fire question? That was when I came here. I, sometimes the marketing is so good and I think Wingard did that also, kudos to them. An amazing marketing. I know James Walden Johnson Park, I saw Liz on here. The marketing of Hemming Park initially was so good, but you don't want to oversell what you have also. So I think that, I do think that got sunsetted because I think we're more about, not necessarily, marketing is obviously important, but marketing the things we have. If you say go to Sweet Pizza, it's impossible to argue how great it is. Chamblin's is one of the best bookstores I've ever been to and it's not even the best bookstore in the city. They have another bigger one. This one is amazing. I was just there today. It's literally amazing. Number one place, my dad lives in Palo Alto, California, and he only wants to go to Chamblin's, both of them, the one here and the other one, because he loves books. So we have some great amenities and you mentioned the symphony. I mean, there's so many.
Love a symphony.
But that's where I think we want to market it. You see our website just shows you what downtown has. And we've got these great lapel pins that you can buy that are the great logo that Wingard created.
I have one of those, they're great.
Hopefully buy one and spread the word. But, you know, downtown is a great place already and we could just make it better.
I still have a whole bunch of questions. So we're going to, I'm going to kind of ask a question that's very relevant to downtown and then I, of course Jake, I'm going to send you a list of questions or I'll just call you later and we'll work through them and then I'll send them out to everyone. Downtown Council, as a whole, we have been trying very hard to, as we grow as a council, to be more involved with downtown as far as helping with any projects. I mean, we have our annual paw prints every year and we raise money for that. And that money, we need to find a place to, we want, we want to use it for the greater good of downtown and helping downtown projects as opposed to just giving money to just, not, not to be flippant about it, but like it's great that we can give money to organizations, but we'd like to actually be giving money to a program or a development or a something that's going on with downtown. So we as Downtown Council would love to know from DVI what, what's out there, what maybe we can help get involved with, what can we let our members know that they can get involved with? Like how do we help downtown?
Sure. And I'm not going to answer now, I'm going to work on that. I do think, this is one of our challenges is, and I do think this is Downtown Vision's role, is to channel this support and love for downtown. People ask me all the time, what can I do? And I'm like, spend your money, shop, but there's, there's something missing. So I will work on that and think about how we can develop a way to channel even better in a collaboration between the Chamber and DVI and probably DIA, channel the support of downtown and the supporters that we have better into projects and tangible change. I definitely see how that is something we need and I will have to do more research and come back and present it to get support from this group.
Oh, that sounds nice. I like that. Okay, cool. I just, you know, ultimately speaking, you know, for us, it's important. I know that y'all have your annual gala every year and you always have like a pet project and it's always something that you're going to do for the next year. And we just, not, not that we want to piggyback on that, but we would love to also be able to be giving back like y'all do annually.
Really appreciate that and I was being totally serious. I will work on that. I definitely feel like there, and there's an opportunity there that other places I think are doing that and I think we need to, and I do think DVI should fill that role. So there's a lot to do though, but we will definitely try to work on that. And I think you guys, being supporters of downtown are fantastic, so don't think you're not doing a lot, but we could always do more. I will say right now, you can buy any gift card and spend it. So we are trying to have things you can do, but there is this need for more and I think we need more. And I think you look at all these nonprofits need more support. I know, you know, Groundwork Jacksonville is going to need people to help with their trails. I mean, there's this volunteer aspect, like you were saying about them. And so we do need to do a better job of activating that and focusing that.
Okay, cool. Well, there's other big questions and we're kind of going really close to our time limit now. So what I'm going to do actually is hand it over to Gracie and let her kind of do the wrap up, kind of talk about what we've got going on in the future. And then Jake, do you want to re, or we'll put it in the, in the notes, reshare your email address. And then you guys, if you ask questions and then we didn't get them answered, well, I'll get them from Jake and we'll send them out to everyone in a recap. And then we're going to reshare Jake's email address so you can just send him questions directly. He's really good at responding to those, especially at midnight.
We got a lot of these questions. I'm looking at the chat, I really appreciate.
I know. Will we get the deck so we can have the website for the gift cards?
Did you mention manifest? I feel like I should be mentioning a drink manifest, obviously fantastic downtown.
Yeah.
Obviously City Year, Paul Woods, a great downtown nonprofit that's helping our schools. Bonnie, hopefully.
City Year's.
Jake. So that's great. I mean, there's so many great people in downtown and please support them all. I really worry that I left someone out. But yeah, it's great. Bruce, I think, asked about our ambassadors, which is great.
Oh, yeah, I did want to ask about them. Are they, are they just your 90, they are just your 90 block, right?
Only things that we, from that standpoint, that's one of the only things that our ambassadors are wearing orange. I didn't put them, they, our ambassadors in downtown, they only go in the half square mile because that is the thing we spend the most money on. You might see on the news, Andrew Jackson statue got vandalized today with white paint. So we are out there cleaning off, it wasn't even like, you know, I don't know, it just looked like, it just looked like someone splashed paint on it. But.
What got vandalized?
Andrew Jackson.
Statue at the circle by the landing. So we are cleaning that up though. So our ambassadors are amazing. See them, please thank them and then text me and tell them, tell me they're doing a good job. And, you know, in other places in downtown, we don't have that, but that is only in our 90 block district. But yeah, I don't know why people are vandalizing downtown, don't do that.
People are bored. I don't know, they're bored. I've got someone asking, what's the website for the E-card again? Do they just go to DTJacks?
Yes, it's DTJacks EGiftcard.com. But all vanity URLs aside, if you go to downtownjacksonville.com or DTJacks.com, you can find it. If not, email me or tweet me and I will send it to you. But we try to make a vanity, DTJacksEGiftcard.com should work.
Okay.
And it's a great, we've already sold about $8,000 worth of gift cards and it's fantastic. We want to sell way more, so if you can, we're giving you free money, so please buy them.
Awesome. Okay, Gracie, I'm going to give it to you, my love. You want to go ahead and give us out?